The regular meeting of the Hubbardston Planning Board is six thirty four P M. Planning Board meetings are broadcast live and digitally recorded. This meeting is being held both in person and virtually through Google Meet pursuant to Section twenty of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-one, allowing public meetings to be conducted remotely so that board and committee members, as well as members of the public, can participate remotely. Recognizing that we have a quorum present for the purpose of conducting business, which remember is in the room. And do we, did we have anybody online for members?
No.
And no members online, so we'll be able to do regular votes. So moving down the agenda, first thing is public comments or anything not on the agenda? Anybody have anything not on the agenda? All right, moving forward into acceptance of the previous minutes. Now, the minutes have been distributed to the board, both in the Google Drive and in the, uh, the packet made available. We'll pause for a moment so everyone can orient themselves. Uh, and then afterwards, I would like to take a motion and then do the corrections in the discussion section. Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes from November sixth.
I will second that motion.
All right, here on a first and a second, uh, corrections and discussion.
I would like a few more minutes just to review it's the first time I see them, so I apologize. We have not had a chance to review them online.
We do have a log on.
I'm also, thank you, Chair.
Uh, any corrections or comments or anything else we need to adjust on them?
Nice work, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so hearing done, calling a vote.
Stager, aye.
Demilia, aye.
And the Chair is aye, the minutes are accepted. Moving further down on the agenda, we have a planner's report. Do we have anything for the planner's report that's not in the other items?
Uh, Chris, I'm happy to speak to this if you'd like.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I asked, um, Leanne to go ahead and place this on the agenda. So any meeting that I intend to, to join of your, I'm probably gonna have this on there, just so I can give you kind of a brief overview of anything that's happened from the last time we met, uh, to now. Most recently, I've met with Francois on the A D U bylaw. Uh, I've met with a member of the public on the battery energy storage system bylaw that was previously brought to town meeting. And we continue to plug away at your goals. Uh, we'll talk about those a little more later, later tonight, but, uh, at this stage, working to get those timed lined out and set aside. Similarly, I'm working with Nate right now to develop a scope of work for the grant award that was made to the town so that you can move forward procurement starting next month.
Awesome. Uh, any questions from any of the members on the report?
The only question I would have for Alec is, is Alec, I, I responded, uh, to your A D U bylaw, uh, and send you comments with drafts. I'm, I just, I just wanna make sure that you did receive them. I sent you two documents.
Let me double check. I do believe I have it in here and I believe I owe you a response, so.
Okay, I just wanna, since, since, since you're fairly new to this here, I, I'm sorry, fairly new here, and I was not sure if I had your email correct, I just wanted to confirm that you had indeed received them. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, any other questions or comments from, uh, the board?
No.
All right, well, moving forward, um, like Alec mentioned, we're gonna come back to many of those items in much greater depth.
Yep.
So, moving down on the agenda, uh, we have the continued public hearing for the, uh, the scenic road application. Excuse me. So with that, I'm calling to order the continued public hearing, the continued public hearing for the scenic road application pursuant to the provisions of M G L, Chapter forty, Section fifteen, C, scenic roads. The Hubbardston Planning Board is holding a continued public hearing, um, that began on Wednesday, November sixth, regarding the removal of public shade trees located on Williamsville Road, Hubbardston, Massachusetts. Uh, the applicant is National Grid and the purpose is for new pole instructions. So, let's, um.
It's on the back of the front page.
Back of the front page?
Yep. In your hand.
This one?
No, blue.
Back.
Right there.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
Oh, I was looking for the public hearing check sheet.
Oh, my God.
I, I was about to be so very impressed that you read my mind and knew that I was looking for the check sheet, and had already put it in the folder for me.
He did not, he's like.
So, uh, I guess to, to jump right into there, um, uh, the applicant, can you come on up and let us know what you've, uh, supplemented?
Hello again.
Nice to be here.
Nice to be finally getting some rain.
Sure.
Tell me about it. You work for the park, right?
Yeah.
Um, so, we, we provided the, uh, the map as requested. I know the original map did not, uh, have numbers that would have clarified things. The supplemental map was provided, uh, I believe prior to the weekend on Friday. That included numbers, that makes it easier to follow along with the spreadsheet and see exactly where those trees are. Uh, I don't know if you've had a chance to review them or if you feel that the plan submitted was sufficient to meet the needs or desires of the planning board, but, um, if there's any changes that you'd like to see, you know, you have to take some notes. Leanne, would you mind if I borrowed a pen, actually?
Of course.
Is this the?
Yes, that is not the one with the numbers, unfortunately, but.
Exactly, that's why I was asking.
Yeah, um, I don't know.
I looked at both attachments and I didn't see one with numbers when I printed.
Really? Huh. Sent it on. Friday? Friday morning or this week?
Yeah, what was online was all exclamation points everywhere.
Yeah, same as I was saying here.
There were numbers on the, on the, on the spreadsheet.
All right, apologies, there was a, a version created that had the numbers. Uh, it does not look like.
Yeah, no, I definitely sent that to, I C C U.
Yeah, I printed what was on there, so I, we'll pull it up.
All right, apologies about that.
All right, sorry. While you guys are looking for that, let's, um, let's move down the, the check sheet here, um, which is, uh, staff reporting on procedural or application deficiencies. So, Alec, have you had an opportunity to review the, uh, the package that was submitted to the board with the, the supplements?
Yep, so, um, I've reviewed that and I've reviewed some additional materials with, from Eric. Um, I'll note that your, um, I'll note that your bylaw does give you some level of flexibility. And so while typically I would look for, say, an engineer plan, um, I do know that this was the subject of a, um, of a shade tree hearing at an earlier date in time, so there has been previous opportunity for folks to come see the, the trees that are being removed. Your bylaw gives you the flexibility that you don't need a plan that is too scale. If you are comfortable with the plan that's been provided to you, um, and you feel that the updated spreadsheet gives you enough detail, in particular, the updated spreadsheet does reflect that privately owned trees have been removed from the queue. And I believe, uh, that the team has spoken with, uh, the Department of Conservation and Recreation regarding any trees that are on their land as opposed to the public right of way. At this time, my understanding from the material submitted is that you're only being asked to approve those trees which follow the new right of way. There's no need for additional approvals from other property owners. So this falls to your confidence level on the plan provided, um, which, as I said, there was an earlier date in time for the public to interact with this, uh, and to see the trees that were being removed.
Okay, and just a note for the, oh, so Alec, is it your opinion that the, uh, the application is currently complete from procedural standpoint?
Yes, so at this stage, you have a complete application before you. Um, it just comes down to whether you approve of the plan that was submitted, which, again, you do have flexibility in your bylaw.
All right, thank you. All right, so, moving down the checklist here, so we have received the noting that what's in consideration for us. We have the updated spreadsheet listing all of the trees, along with the dimensions and the details of the trees. What's been presented to us for plans are aerial photographs with the trees marked in the location. They are not numbered, but do, uh, if we were to lay these out and follow the pathway of the road, would the number of the trees go along with the east to west view of the road?
With the east to west view, yes.
Okay. So it, it is possible.
West to east.
Of course, I believe it's, I believe it starts, um, center of town.
So it would be west to east.
So, five Williamsville Road would be the very first one, is that the first picture, is that the first one we see here on the, on the, uh, in here?
It's the one with the, yeah, it's the.
Yeah, right.
The fewest.
Yep, so five corresponds to the first exclamation mark, you should be.
Yes, that's right.
That's what I wanted to make sure that I understood.
And then it proceeds, kind of in the opposite direction.
So if we go down the, once we finish this here, we go to the next little page and that will, oh, yes.
Yeah, that's right.
Got you, thank you.
All right, so it is possible to match them up against the documents that were submitted to us.
And I, I did, just for the board's reference, I did send the, the set has the attachments and that, so there.
Apologies that you didn't correct one.
Four, I think it was maybe confusing because there was a couple of different emails flying around, but that does have the.
But you could resend that, right? So that we have it as records.
All right, and noting, noting for the record, we have received that, uh, it just wasn't produced in the, uh, board packet.
Okay.
All right, uh, do you, can you just summarize for anybody who might be watching online what it is that we're here for and what we're doing and why we're looking to do the cutting?
Sure. So, the project is to, um, make room for pole installations that are required to create space on the poles for Comcast wires that are being installed below, uh, in order to give them sufficient clearance from the, uh, you know, the voltage that is running through the power lines. We need to give them a certain degree of distance. And most of these poles that are being replaced are either only thirty-five or some of them are forty feet and they need to go up to forty-five to create that space. So, many of these trees that were identified are growing out over the lines, uh, and could not be trimmed because if we tried to trim them, we would be removing more can't be than can be sustained by the, the tree. Some of them are actually just hazardous, uh, they have cavities, they're dead, they're falling apart. And so, we're looking to just get them out of the way, even if they're not necessarily in the way of the installation. We wanna clean up the, the lines.
All right, thank you. So, any, uh, any additional questions from the board for the applicant?
I have a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
First, uh, you have column H where it says the leave wood. Uh, most of them are in blank, you have Q R with a no and a yes. Would it be reasonable to assume that anything that is in blank will be the equivalent of a no?
That would be, uh, fair to assume, yeah. Unless we go back to the permission form to see that the person has in fact said yes. But I would assume that the only ones that we have confirmed are the ones that are actually written as yeses.
Okay, and those that are yeses, you typically would have gotten in touch with the person or the individuals who are the closest to that tree. So these are property owners that are interested in picking the wood up and bringing it to their house and not having to bring a trailer or anything like that to move this here.
Yeah, it's the, you know, directly in front of their house and they burn the wood and want to process it.
That's fantastic. The other question I had was, uh, same with regards to the police details, none of them are marked?
Yeah, uh, I believe that this would require a police detail, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's gonna, uh.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
So, I mean, the, I don't know why that was left blank, honestly, you know, generally, we would fill it out. Every column would just say yes.
So if I would ask you to at some point in time in the future, just amend this here. And I don't, I don't think there's any reasonable reason why we would reject it for not having it, especially with the explanation you've given here, and that you just mark this here that the police detail will be so required. Last thing, I had requested last time is, is if you have a timeline that was in your project's view as to when you plan to do this here. And I know this is in twenty twenty-five, but, I mean, are we talking spring, are we talking summer? Do you have sort of like a typical timeline where this typically happens?
So, I, my understanding is that, so we do work year round.
Yep.
But generally, once we have permission, we have to just wait for a tree crew to open up and then, so it could be a month or two months after we.
So you're talking about our permission?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, gotcha. So from the moment that this project is approved, another two months forward, and that could therefore be in the winter.
It could be sooner. It could be anytime, basically, yeah.
I'm sorry?
It could be anytime, whenever we get a crew.
Okay.
But I would, I would think it would be sooner, probably sooner than later.
Yep, okay, yep. That's it.
Any further questions from the board?
No.
All right, um, any further report from the staff on this application? Do you have anything else, Alec? I think you already.
I think it's this one.
All right, thank you. So, any additional questions from the board for the staff?
Not from my side, I just wanted to ask Mr. Sweetie something if I may.
That's gonna be the next bullet point.
Fine.
Well, actually, for next, we asked Nate if he has any.
That's fine, go ahead.
Nate, do you have any, um, any questions or comments?
No, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you, all right, now we're, uh, now we're into members of the public.
I was just curious as to, uh, if your concerns were.
Yes.
Taken care of.
Eric was, came down and checked out the trees that I had mentioned and he looked at them and said, no, they don't need to be come down. They were trimmed back to their satisfaction.
So they're no longer included in here?
So they're no longer included and I took the tags off the trees. So nobody got confused.
Excellent.
So, I figured to finalize and be here for the, invited me to first.
Well, thank you for coming and saving those trees. We'll call you the official tree hugger.
Not necessarily, I just couldn't see the, there was a clump, clump of trees and they'd be taking one out of this one, two out of the next one, and there were clumps right, and the stumps would be there and things like that, you know. They don't have to take them, because they weren't.
There's no major defect to those trees and.
Yeah, they went, they seemed to be healthy, yeah.
It's more of a proximity issue, but since they've already been thrown in there.
Do you have anything I'm happy you came?
Any, any other questions or comments you have?
No, I have none, everything seems to have been, you know, very well organized with the tree people and cutting everything back and cleaning up their mess, you know.
Any?
Seems to be well.
Any questions or comments from anybody online? I don't think we have any other general members of the public. Going once, going twice. So, uh, next would be, uh.
May I ask a quick question to the trees? What do you guys do with the wood chips?
Uh, it's up to the tree crews to find homes for them, dispose of them. Sometimes they go to a landfill, sometimes they bring them to a facility and sell them.
All right.
Yeah, the old packle farm takes a lot of them, too.
Chipdump.com. Where there's a thing you can sign up to have chips dumped in your yard.
Here in Hubbardston?
Anyway.
Yeah, anywhere, yeah, you just go to chipdump.com and put in your address and somebody's driving by with a load that they can't get rid of.
No, I look, I look for, I, I have you so often, I'd like to get some wood chips because they're, they're great for mushrooms.
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
Does potato poles, um, I know it doesn't affect you, um, I guess it's what? Spectrum and Verizon did have to finish their wires before the temporary, uh, well, the original poles that are attached to the new poles are gonna get done. Does, is, is there any time factor on that?
Uh, I can't speak to the time factor on the other utilities changing their, you know, reattaching their wires to the new pole.
But that's all up to them, right?
Yeah, unfortunately, there's not a whole lot the, we as the utility can do for it. As the town, we can attempt to put some pressure on, on the, um, the second and third party attachments, but it's, um, yeah, I don't know, it's more of a, probably that, I'm not sure if it'll be Nate or D W or was that?
Yeah, it is.
It's, it's a valid question.
Yeah.
Every community has double poles and it's, we're, National Grid's always the first one to transfer and then you have the residual, yeah, so.
They had some challenging areas, mine was one. I have underground utilities, so I was very curious, I was see how that was gonna go, you know, ripping up the, wow, didn't move anything.
Right.
New pole in that's place and shifted the other pole a little bit and, so.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for the question, it was interesting, I was curious about that myself. All right, so, um, we already summarized all the materials we received for the record. Does the applicant have any final comments?
No.
All right, does the board have everything they think they need in order to make a decision before we chose to close the evidence gathering phase?
And then some.
All right, if that.
Got the URL.
Yeah, if, uh, if that's the case, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to close the hearing, the public hearing?
So, so moves. I will make the motion that we, uh, close the public hearing and that we take a vote.
Hearing, hearing a first and a second, any discussion? All right, calling a vote on closing the public hearing.
Stager, aye.
Demilia, aye.
And the Chair is aye, the hearing is closed. At this point, the board can no longer accept any additional evidence. So with that, it opens the deliberation, um, I guess we've, uh, and I'll start. So we've heard from our applicant that it is a procedurally complete application. The applicant appears to have engaged in good faith negotiations with some of the landowners in order to try to do the minimum amount of cutting. And to me, it, uh, it seems like, uh, we're also talking about a, um, public necessity here because of, um, the utilities involved. So, uh, we do have a specific check sheet for scenic road applications for specific factors related to aesthetics and such. Board would like, we could run through it in deliberations, but, uh, I personally would be willing to waive that based upon the testimony we've heard so far unless somebody else on the board objected.
No objection.
No objection.
Fair. Does anybody else have any other comments or points for deliberation?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, in that case, would somebody like to make a motion to, um, approve the scenic road application of National Grid? Let me just make sure I get together identifying information. Motion. So it would be to. I know, I just had the right, this meeting's agenda right here. All right, to approve the application, a motion to approve the application filed pursuant to Chapter forty, Section fifteen, scenic roads, uh, for the cutting of certain trees identified in the documents filed with the planning board on Williamsville Road, the applicant National Grid.
I will make that motion.
Here on a first, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Any additional discussion? All right, hearing done, calling a vote.
Stager, aye.
Demilia, aye.
And the Chair is aye, the, uh, the application is approved. Thank, thank you for working with us and for your patience and getting the process going. Obviously, we've been working through turnover, but we're in a great place now, so.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Happy guy.
All right, so I'm, uh, I'm gonna rush you guys out because we, uh, we only have until seven thirty.
Yeah, all right. Nice evening.
Thank you, have a good evening. All right, so moving down the agenda, uh, into, I guess it's continued new business at this point. Um, we have, uh, the Country Hen A and R update, Alex has been doing some work and some research on that. Would you like to report on that?
Yeah, um, Leanne was actually incredibly helpful, once again, no shocker there. Um, Leanne has compiled the complete permitting history on the various buildings and structures. It's a lot more than I had originally anticipated, uh, and there's been a lot more recent updates to the structures than expected. Uh, the nuance to this is that if, uh, since Bob and his, his team have taken ownership of the land, if they have in any way contributed to the non-conformity or increased it, um, they would not be eligible for the exemption provided by the new state law. So I'm doing my research to confirm, uh, when they took ownership, to confirm the history of those various improvements and if any of them did create a non-conformity. Uh, I do expect to have an answer within the next week or so, um, so that he'll know how to proceed from there. Uh, and I did previously speak to Nate about, uh, waiver fees, given that he's been before you a couple times now. So, uh, if he does choose to move forward, he can look forward to, to not having to pay those additional, um, and we'll be able to get him an answer rather shortly. I hope this one would be an easy one, but they rarely are when it comes to non-conformities.
Excellent, thank you for that report. And just for the benefit of the public, um, the reason this is becoming a bit more of a production for an A and R is because there's been a change in state law and where some of the first people, if not the first people working our way through it, and certainly the first ones looking at these particular issues, uh, anywhere in the state. So, we're on brand new ground. All right, so the next item here is, uh, the goals and project timeline. So, uh, just to recap what the board's been working on for a period of a year or so at this point, is we put together a list of goals based upon our reading of the, um, the, the master plan of some of the other support documents and from listening to constituent feedback and from also going through some of our old surveys, uh, and we put together an unprioritized list of goals and we gave that list to Alec to, uh, to build out and develop into something that's actionable and something that actually makes sense from a planning standpoint. That list was sent out to everybody on the planning board, um, to, um, to comment and put into a forced ranking matrix. Uh, it then came back and at the last meeting, we reviewed it. And reviewing it, we accepted it as a planning board, uh, as, um, as our current guide point on what we believe our priorities for projects are. And we followed that up with, um, with a request to Alec to, um, to take that and essentially break it into tiers. Because ultimately, we need to be flexible and work with the problems that come up in the constituents that we have. So it's not as simple as knocking off one, two, three, four, five, six. So we're, um, we're breaking it up into priority tiers. So that's where we're currently at with it and, uh, with that, um, I'd like to turn it over to Alec to talk about that and also talk about what the first steps for tier one's gonna look like.
Thanks for that, Chris. I'm just gonna pull this back up so that everyone can see, um, actually, real quick, if I could just, uh, whoever has their screen shared, if I could just, uh, have you take that down, I'll go ahead and bring up my own.
I will have my screen shared.
Is it Nate?
I think it was Nate.
I was like, no one else has a computer.
All right, so you should be able to see your goals as they were originally placed in and as you have since confirmed. Um, so these are unadjusted and unfluctuated, but I wanted to kind of go over them with you again tonight while we have it all in hand. So, as you can see, there was a bulk tie here at number four, and so that'll, that'll require kind of parsing some things out. But notably, uh, number one that rose to the top is update and modernization of special permit and site plan process. So that's a relatively short term goal, so it's really great that it made it all the way to the top because that's exactly the kind of marching orders that I, as your planner, am looking for. Both something that can be tangibly done in short order and something that was ranked pretty highly. Uh, some, let's look at a project that's kind of the inverse of that. We have the zoning bylaw recodification, that's something that's gonna take some time. Uh, it does take time for the consultant to work through the proposal, to work through the bylaw, to create the audit and to mark it up and, and propose your restructured system. And so while this is a very highly ranked project, it's not something we're gonna be able to turn over quite as quickly.
And Alec, just have you pause for a moment, just for the benefit of the public and for some of the board. Wasn't the funding for that just approved at the last town meeting?
That's correct, I do believe you've received funding. Uh, Nate could speak better to where that was from, but it's my understanding that we're actually working through a contract and how to get that done. Oh, yeah, we did. Thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to legally review and e-codify the general and zoning bylaws as well as a few other documents like the town charter. It was approved the other night. I thank town meeting and Alec and Leanne and Chris for working with me on that. Additionally, I thank the town clerk for her support. I think it's gonna be a really great project, it'll allow us to prioritize goals even further and set things like a five-year plan and things like that, just so that we can prioritize and actually make some solid progress for the town and for diversifying the tax base. Thank you.
Thank you, sorry for the interruption, uh, but I thought that was pretty important to get in there.
Good, good point to raise and, uh, it's definitely something worth celebrating. So, uh, in more general terms, what I'm gonna do with your goals moving forward is I'm gonna look at these top six first. I'm gonna start with them, uh, because that's your, your midpoint, that's your first cutoff. That's not to say that goals seven through twelve won't be worked on in this coming year. but I'm going to start with goals one through six. I've started Gantt charting them out, breaking them down into individual steps and process. And for your first meeting in December, you'll actually have those timed lined out. You'll see that there's going to be a lot of overlaps in projects. For example, evaluation of the sand pits. We've already received grant funding to work on that. Nate did a great job of bringing that together before I even got on board. And now that I'm here, I'm working through a finite scope of work and meeting with consultants in the field who can give me different approaches they would take to get this done. That's an example of one that's already on the rails, but it's again, going to have an extended timeline. Versus your update and modernization of special permit and site plan process, where we'll be able to have actionable steps. In fact, you've already taken steps. Step two in the process was approving revised forms that in the meantime, for lack of a better term, kind of stop the bleed. They, they create a better stock gap and reduce liability in the interim while we continue to work through and revise the greater documents. As I said, for your next meeting for goals one through six, you're going to have a Gantt chart that actually breaks these down, gives you the timeline, going to give you your specific deadlines for various public hearings. If additional is, if funding is required, when it will be required and who will be done by. And notably, not all of these will be done by ourselves. Your zoning bylaw recodification, your evaluation of the sand pits, potentially even a revision to a commercial district are things that can be done by a consultant. That being said, we can also take some of these in-house. We can form working groups. We can get stuff done. So at your next meeting, not only do you have a Gantt chart, but you'll have some decisions to make as to whether you want to handle things in-house, which means reduce costs but potentially extend the timeline. Or if you want to go out and seek funding, which could expedite the process once grant funding is secured. That's the update for now. I don't have anything to give you at this time, but happy to hear that these were approved and looking forward to getting further work done on them.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you for all your work on it. And thank you to the board because there's certainly been a lot of homework in getting this together. Although for somebody just watching, it might just look like a sheet of paper with a box on it. There was a lot to get there and even going through doing the force raking took considerable amount of time to read everything. So thank you to everyone on that and I'm happy to see us moving, moving in the right direction. Anybody from the board have any, any questions for Alec about those updates?
Yep, thank you.
All right, so moving into administrative matters. Do we have any other ones that, okay. Matters not reasonably anticipated by chair. I mean, it's been a quiet week. I haven't gotten anything in since the agenda cut off. Has anybody else had anything caught up, come up or anything they want to bring to the attention of the board? All right, moving on for additional public comments. Do we have anybody online looking to comment? Do we have anybody on the board that is looking for additional comment or to bring something else up? All right, so we've made through everything we had on the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming out and doing all the work to be ready for this. So with that said, would somebody like to make a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second that motion.
Hearing a first and a second. It is non-debatable. Calling a vote.
Shaggy, aye.
Demalia, aye.
And the chair is aye. We are adjourned at seven oh seven PM.